Board. For February ninth. Sorry, give me one more second to pull up the agenda. So this is being conducted by Zoom per the governor's orders. It's also being recorded and a copy will be put on the website. If anybody is recording it, that is fine. You just need to let us know. Anyone? Okay, I would ask that people. Sign in if you could in the chat, just so we have a sign in sheet basically of people who are here. All right, seven o'clock town planners report Alan.
Buyer of 771 College Highway. That's the Palma land on the west side of College Highway. Just north of Winfield Heights. And he's looking, it's a B, it's a BR zone. And he's looking to put in an office and self-storage buildings. Which is allowed in the BR zone. He, I had, he wanted to get on tonight's meeting under public comment. But he didn't think he'd have anything available, so he's going to try to go on. The next meeting we have. Also, I've been talking to the owners of the Greens West. And they have. On the, on College Highway to the north. They have three lots. Two of them are on a common driveway. And the one potential buyer does not want us to have a common driveway and share it. So what he's looking at doing is taking two of the lots. Combining them so he has access to College Highway. To do a modification to the subdivision. He was informed that he should, he has to talk to his surveyor slash engineer. It's a state highway, so he would have to get their permission. So he was given enough information to pursue that avenue. Also, I've talked to Mr. Brown. On a possible modification to the disc golf course. For amenities which he's on, he's on the agenda later on. There's been a lot of, there's been a lot of interest. There's three lots on Klein Road. That are for sale. And one gentleman is interested in buying, buying all of them and combining them together, which again. He can do, but it would be a modification to. A property, property lines. It's, it's down at Klein Road, it's down in the depth by the. The stream before you get up to. The major road. Also, I helped, I prepared a preliminary decision for the Verizon cell tower. For the board to revise, which I see we've had some, some input on that. I have some additional information. Given to. The firm that's interested in the Griffin Land Trust land on College Highway, they've been out doing. Intensive surveys. And looking at avenues of hooking into sewer, water and other. Utilities. Number one Lexington Circle, I've, I have. Giving them information, they, they just recently purchased an existing house. And they're looking at what the setbacks are and whether they can get a pool. Or a shed or a combination of both. And then more, more recently, number eight Concord Road. Has questions on creating an estate lot. He has 150 foot frontage. On Tannery Road. And he would use that, use that to create a, an estate lot. He, his residence is off of eight Concord Road. And again, the estate lot would be coming off of Concord. Where the land on Tannery Road would be a conventional lot. So he's pursuing. His engineer to do that necessary work that's required for that. And that's it for right now.
Hey. Michael, are we recording the meeting? I didn't get a notice of that.
It is recording, yes.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, 7:05 public comments, anybody have anything to bring to the board? Mention that is not on the agenda for this evening. Okay, 710 Verizon cell written decision. So I will turn this, well, let's let. Hold on one second. Because Mr. Fenton just. Got to the waiting room, all right, let me get him in. So 710 Verizon cell written decision, I will. Turn it over to Marcus.
Thank you, Michael. Hopefully, the board. Members who are involved with this decision. Have had a chance to. Look at the latest revision. Which is. Timestamp 3pm this afternoon. The document that was sent out about 2:20pm this afternoon. By Megan has been reformatted. To fit in the standard format that the planning board usually uses. So in the time allotted. Between now and 7:30. I think I'll. Help facilitate the process here of marking up the decision. If everyone has something hard copy they can look at. Or they have it on their computer. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, a few heads nod.
Yep, Marcus, I can just bring it up on this, on a share screen if you.
Yes, that would be great. Forgot about that.
All right, so let me.
We'll get a share screen view of the, right now it's 11 pages.
Okay, does that work?
Yes, I see it. Okay, if you scroll down a little bit, Michael, on that page.
Yeah, hold on a second, let me just. Minimize that so I can see.
Okay. Okay, any of the board members have comment on page one?
We just need the official date of the last revision.
Yes, and I have that, it's, I believe, December 29th, 2020. That was a date that was on the drawings. That were submitted. And that was the drawing. A change in the access way. And the cell tower. Mono pine. Okay, moving on to page two. Which. Starts the findings.
Hey Marcus.
Yes.
Why is my name underlined on?
It doesn't like the spelling.
Because singer is not a recognized proper word in the English language.
I'll put it in my dictionary. Next time it won't be that.
That's, that's the same thing, Dick, as they sell a code, you know, that's, that's underlined, but when it's printed. It won't be underlined.
Add it to dictionary, Dick. There you go.
Okay, page two. Any comments? I had, I was looking at. Item three. Item three. States. It will constitute a nuisance because of unacceptable level of air or water pollution. Excessive noise and in other findings. With, that, that, it's not a finding. So I think there's a contradiction with, with the other findings. On that one, item three, do you see where I'm talking?
Yep.
I think the language was pulled as a list because that's the way that it reads in the bylaw.
So as a finding.
To take it out.
As a finding that I think we would remove by re. Take out level of air or water pollution. Excessive noise or. So it's unacceptable visually flagrant structures. I think that's the intent there. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, that's correct, I think what, what happened is this is coming in right out of chapter 185. And I think there's 17, 17 items and it's just. A list of items that went through. And it's trying to be very inclusive, which is good.
So we need to edit, we need to edit it from visually back, remove.
Okay.
Michael. So from visually keep, go back. To there, good. Remove. Okay, look at it, see if it's okay.
That word need to come out now too, and I. I'll be careful with what I say because I am recused, but from, you know, the, the English major. Son of a teacher in me is going to prevent me from not correcting grammar, I think.
That's fine. So.
And need to come out.
And reason of and acceptable visually. No, I wouldn't, but whatever.
Agree that it does.
David Cena says it should be removed. Very good. Okay, page three.
I wanted to add something for number eight. After improvements. Let's make sure I have it. I think it, it needs to read the proposal will. Impair pedestrian traffic and the reason is to add in here the. Existing walking and bike trails. So I, we, I guess it's going to take us a while to go through all of this, but I just.
May not finish it all by the half hour, but we can continue it later. On in the meeting, so we should, you know, do it as we make progress.
So we can put like a little highlight here as a point I want to come back to.
I can make, I can make notes. And I'm happy to read them back later as far as which ones you want to come back to.
Page three, item eight.
Yep.
Anything else on page three?
Should we be more specific in item seven of what's? Where it does not comply?
I would think we do that later on in the set, we enumerate chapters 10 and 23.1.
Right, Dave, what we did is after, after the initial 17. We put in your, the paragraph.
The details.
Talking about the height of the tower and things along that line.
Got it, okay.
So move on to the next page. I think, oh, hold it. Item 17. Is the same situation where the words are used. Air pollution, water pollution, drainage flooding. Noise, vibration and lighting. I think there, that. Is, you know, not what. Possibly you were trying to say because it was, you know, reference back to the item three. Unless you think that's a statement you want.
That comes right out of the bylaw, Marcus. And I think what the intent was to show. That they looked at all 17 items. As part of the bylaw. It can be, it can be revised.
Well, yeah, you're making a statement here, so it needs to be revised. I think that would be good to remove those words. Do you? Or agree?
I agree.
Thank you.
Did I highlight correctly what you were talking about, Marcus?
Yes. There may be an extra comma there now. There we go. Okay, let's see, trying to catch up, yeah. Okay, let's see, the next one is. Page four. Are your standard, the standards for the 18510 site plan standards. Everyone okay with item C?
No.
Okay, item D, the title needs to be corrected. Because 18523.1 is the wireless communications services district. Not the special permit criteria, I don't believe. So basically you'd pull the text from that first sentence, there you go. And put it up as the title. There you go. Excellent. Want to scroll, there, scroll up a little bit, any, oh, whoa. So we're into the wireless communication services district criteria.
Are you underneath section D, Marcus?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're under D, so go to page five, I heard no comments. Anybody see anything that they want adjusted? Okay, scroll on please. Still on page. Whatever it is, five maybe, yep, no, yes, five. Page six talks about the balloon floats. And tree removal. Roman numeral IV. Roman numeral four. All set?
Number three, I, can we maybe take out the word deliberately? We know that they were taken, we just don't know, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, it's best to take out deliberately, yeah.
Reasonable? Scroll down or scroll up, telecommunications act 1966. That's an old act, how about 96? Did I say 86?
You said 66.
Six.
You only, you're 76.
Whatever.
That's the spirit.
You see it, I'm glad you're watching, David. Any comments? All right, continue to scroll. Oh, there's a subitem there. What is that? Subitem one talks about exhibits A and B. Two, some reason it's underlined in blue. Should that be in?
It just wants to lowercase it, that's all.
Oh. Okay. Any comments on that page anymore, anything?
Marcus, I would. I'd sort of suggest since we do have the 730. I forget which one's at 730.
Yeah, the golf course, this golf course.
My suggestion, and it would give people time to sort of process this through, because, you know, it did only get circulated at like 3 o'clock. Why don't we turn to those hearings, try to get through those. You know, reasonably quickly and come back to this and. You know, it'll let, it'll let people kind of think through it and. I'm more than happy to, if people want to send me anything, more than happy to sort of pull that up as well and throw it in where people want it.
So we're at page nine, I think that's a good place to break. Or that's, that's seven, because it got reformatted these pages, I'm looking at the one from 230. Which is where I did my review comments, so, okay. I'll turn it back over to Michael, you could take this down and we'll be. Back on schedule.
All right, so why don't we open up the, well, it's not a hearing, the site plan modification for the disc golf course at 730.
I think Randy, Randy Brown is, is here.
Yeah, just start with. Randy, is it going to be you presenting?
Yes, yes, it is.
All right, so why don't we? Why don't we just turn it over to you, let us, give us a, give us a summary of. What you're proposing and we'll go from there.
Great, I appreciate that, so just for the record, Randy Brown, 95 Fred Jackson wrote. I'm here on the behalf of the applicant Fred Brown of 39 John Mason Road, she's also on the call. We also have a couple of people involved in this product program, project. Drew Gardner from the disc golf course. And also Mike McManus from Powder Hollow Brewery are also on the call today. So thank you for your time tonight. So in late 2016, New England Golf Center and Fred Brown, they got a special permit from the planning board. To operate a commercial, a commercial recreation facility at 4151 John Mason, 4151 John Mason Road. We opened the golf course in late 2017 and we've been open for about just over three years now. Each year we've had a pretty steady growth and we've been very happy with the feedback we received. From the members that have played at the course. And we're kind of ready to take it to the next level, which is why we're here today, talk about our, I guess, our kind of call it phase two. Of our plans to expand our course. So there was a site plan that was submitted, Mike, do you have that? Can you put that on the, on the, on the screen if?
Or you can share this, or you can share the screen with Randy if he has it.
Whatever is easier for you guys.
I'm, hold on, Randy. Meg, do I have that?
Yes, you should.
Yeah, she sent it out to everybody.
I think it's with the agenda email. Last, maybe Thursday.
Let me just see if I, well, here, hold on one second, let me. I'm just not seeing it.
There are actually, there are actually three of three things attached to the one that Megan's talking about. One being the agenda, one being Randy's.
Yeah, for some reason I think it got missed when I downloaded, Randy, you're welcome to try to share if you want, you're able to, but I'll see what I can do in the meantime to grab it here.
I'll let you pull it up here.
Oh, here we go. What did I do?
Can you see that?
There you go, thank you, Randy.
Yep, no problem, thank you, so this, I have a couple of plans, so I think this is the best plan to refer to. This is the layout of the disc golf course and a couple of the changes that we're looking to do. So you can see what was built, you have, to the right of your screen is John Mason Road. There is a lengthy access driveway to get to our main parking area. In that parking area, there are currently 33 parking spots, there's also a small shed for store, for storage of equipment and materials. And what we're looking to do is a couple of things, first of all is. Add a recreation area, which is to the south here. We want to. I think it's, there you go. We want to be able to have more opportunities for the public to, to come and use of the property. Not just play disc golf, but also for volleyball, cornhole and bocce courts. We think that'd be a great complement to our existing facility. We see this place, we see this facility as a place where people can come and hang out, not just to play this golf, but to come hang out for the day. Make it a family event and, and stay and have a lot of fun. Especially with the days of, of the pandemic. I think people are itching to get outside and do activities such as, such as these, I think this is a great opportunity for us. So we want to expand the recreation area and that is shown in here on the plan. The next part of our phase two expansion is to bring in a trailer, which we can serve food and drink to the public. The drinks would include alcohol sales. We are looking to partner with a local brewery, Powder Hollow Brewery, we've had several meetings with them so far. And we think we have a really good plan in place. We would like to bring in a trailer on site. That would be located in this area here in the parking spot. And from that trailer, we'd be able to serve food and drinks. And also we would be able to collect greens fees from the public as they come to play the disc golf course. To the left of the screen of that trailer area, there is a, we're calling an expanded picnic area. There'd be an opportunity to put some picnic tables out, maybe a small shed or not shed, a canopy to sit in, sit in the shade. Enjoy a drink and hang out with some friends after you play your, play a round of golf. So, and then also to accommodate these, these new uses of the property. We are looking to add some parking spaces, so along the access road, there's, there's room there to add about 17 parking spots. And that would be used in conjunction with the 30 parking spots that are going to be, that are going to remain in the main parking area. So that's the, the plan as we have proposed to you, certainly we have to take any questions from the board at this time.
Anybody have any questions?
And Randy, you didn't give us the total acreage of the parcel, I know it's quite large and it's more than adequate to fit what you're looking at.
Yep, I do. It's a, I'd have, I guess, I get the special permit here, I think it's a, it's over a hundred acres.
Right, no, I just wanted them to, to be aware of that, you know, because the scaling. To the normal I might be off a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that exact number, but it's, it's well in excess of a hundred acres, I know that.
Right.
I have a question for Alan, as far as the procedure here. This is a site plan review, it's not a modification of the special permit.
No, this is, the use, the use is still. Recreational and it does fit the same application, it's just, it's an amenity to the disc golf course.
So it'd be termed a site plan review.
Or a modification to a site plan.
Yeah, the disc golf course will always be our primary use at this facility. As, as Alan noted, you know, these, these, these phase two expansions are looking to, to supplement, you know, that main, that main use.
And it's basically to service the public, you know, when they do come in to utilize the disc golf course itself. There's, and there's more than adequate enough amount of parking, you know, for those activities.
One thing I did too, so I believe the process is if this does get approved, planning board will have to sign off on a, on a spa, on a Mylar plan. This plan that you're looking at here doesn't really lend itself well to being. Signed as a typical plan, so I have also developed a, another plan here, which is a CAD drawing. And this is kind of more typical of the plans that you had seen, that you would see and sign. As I blow this up here, you'll see this is a, you know, pretty much the same thing that you looked at on the, the color plan. But I think the, the area with the aerial mapping, it's easier to see how things are being laid out.
Okay. And Randy, there's nothing, you're just using a open cleared area. To do this, there's no, nothing being, you know, no trees being knocked down or anything being moved around.
That is.
Yeah, that is. Or whatever.
Yeah, that is correct, there's a, there, there will be some minor regrading in these areas, so we have, so we have flatter area. But no, we're not taking any trees down, this area has already been disturbed, it's been, you know, prior to this use. It was an agricultural field for many, many years. So other than some minor regrading to change the grades. We're not, we're not, you know, that, that's the only change, the topography that we're planning on doing through this process. There's no material being, you know, being moved offsite as well either.
Okay. Alright, any other questions from the board?
No.
Any questions from anyone else? Anything else you wanted to add, Randy?
No, I appreciate the opportunity, we have several steps in this process, we are working our way towards. We have met with the Board of Health to talk about the trailer and the issue is on that end, we also are planning a meeting with the select board. To secure a liquor license in the near future. And then that's, that's it, those are two town approvals, we're, we're still in the process of securing.
Okay.
It's going to be seasonal, Randy, right?
Yes, we are open seasonally, typically we open in, well, as soon as we can, when the weather, when mother nature allows. But usually March timeframe will open up and then we'll, we'll, we'll be open all the way through December and later if possible.
And I refresh, I, I just, did you say what? What you're using to house the. You know, where you're going to have food and drinks and.
So it's going to be, it's going to be a trailer mounted unit, we're, we're looking at a couple to purchase. But it ought to be on a trailer and it's something that, that is mobile if necessary, but it'll also be under lock and key, so. Any of the contents inside will be protected.
Okay. Alright, so I assume off-season you'll be moving it, you know, for storage purposes and then bringing it back when you need it.
That is correct.
Okay. Alright, any questions, we got set? Alright, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps make a motion to approve the site plan review. For forty-one and fifty-one John Mason Road.
Don't take a second.
Is it? I'm not sure it matters, because I haven't looked at the site plan review one in a while, but is it a site? What does the site plan modification fall under, does it fall under ten or does it fall under? Whatever the other one is. I just, I don't, it doesn't matter that much, but I don't necessarily want to use the wrong language if we don't. I think it's silly approval, right, it's still, he had originally got a site plan approval under section ten, so I think that's.
Right. One eighty-five-ten.
Right.
Site plan approval, this is a modification to the existing site plan.
So it's, and I, and Marcus, it's not, I, I just want to, because there is a section, right, about site plan reviews that you use for, for other purposes. Which are escaping my memory right now, but it has to do with, I think, single-family residences and things like that. So let's just, I'd only adjust it just to say I approve the site plan modification rather than use the word review. Is that okay, Marcus?
That's okay with me.
Alright, and Dick, you second that?
Yeah.
Alright, we'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Elsinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Okay. Great, that brings us to. Seven forty-five. Picking up the solar bylaw discussion. Alright. Give me one second here.
You're, you're at page numbers, page number seven.
No, no, we're going, we're going to the solar quickly.
Oh, okay.
Just to, just to touch base on that. So. What I think. Well, let's just do this, the one thing I just would like to accomplish on this tonight, you know, I would like to get back to the decision, so we're not here. Too long, but. I would like to get a framework for. That solar bylaw, so we can put something together and have text. To actually look at next meeting. And I think the sort of. Homework, if you will, from last meeting was to look at the. You know, think about the criteria that you wanted. You know, for, for. A modification to that bylaw to allow potentially for. Large, well, I shouldn't say large, because that's a criteria, but for residential properties to have ground-mounted. Large ground-mounted solar. Installations. So does anybody have, you know, just want to just pop in here and just speak up as to. The criteria that you are thinking about, whether it is the sort of broader criteria or whether a specific, you know, number or amount that you're thinking about.
I had a couple of comments. One thing I don't know if everybody on the planning board is aware of, the select board has decided to move forward with. Seeking out. Green community designation for Southwick, so it's very timely that we would maybe open up this solar bylaw. To some revision. Because in order to be designated a green community, a town must adopt as of right citing. Renewable and advanced energy generation. And adopt expedited permitting process. So that may come into play as we're looking at. What we require in the way of permitting for any kind of solar, but now if we expand and allow it in the R forty. You know, what, how much are we going to require, right now, any large solar requires a special permit. So I don't know if that passes muster with the green community people, certification people, but something to keep in mind.
Wait, why, why don't you think it does?
Pardon?
Why don't you think it does?
Because I don't see it being an expedited process and allowing as of right. We do allow as of right for solar on buildings, I believe, roof mounted, that kind of thing. Just something to keep in mind and, and, and stay in touch with the folks that are working on getting certified as a green community, so. We don't go through a process of modifying the bylaw and then end up hurting our opportunities to be a green community.
Just, just back it up for me, because I, to be fair. I haven't spent a lot of time with that green communities thing, I did see it, I just haven't spent much time with it. Does it require you to allow everything by right? I mean, or, you know, I mean, I, I just, I'm wondering if some solar is allowed. By rights. Is that acceptable, or do the entire? The entire, you know, every single aspect of solar to be allowed?
No, I don't think every aspect requires as of right.
That just sent us a link in the chat. I'm assuming that will have a lot of information for us, right Doug?
I should have known better, I should.
And there was an article, there was an article in the February first, Westfield News. And there's, I think it's been discussed at a couple of select board meetings, there was a presentation. By Brian Sullivan, who I guess is a coordinator, regional coordinator for green communities. So whatever we develop, I think it would be reasonable to run it by some other folks. To make sure we're, we're not creating a problem, a barrier.
I think it also can go in parallel, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yep.
But it, it, this, this can be a concurrent operation, because I think that the, the by right may be in a particular area or zone and, and you know. This was in a different zone, so you can continue down your path, it, it may be two separate. Endeavors, and I know that, I'll have to double check, but I thought that we had also retain, we have some actions to go through and. Mr. Fox is the lead person on the green community piece, but I believe we also are going to retain Pioneer Valley Planning. Under the shared service agreement we have in order to work with us and the planning board. At some point, to make sure that we have the legislation that needs to be put in front of town meeting for, for green community designation.
Am I to assume by what you're saying that this is not happening in May?
Yes.
I, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
But I, I think that this discussion should still continue with what you're working on, because even if, even if there's another modification to the same bylaw. In order to achieve the green community designation, this, this discussion is still relevant and could still be governed by the special permit process.
Right, no, I think that's right, I mean, it sounds like from what you said, that we may very well have to create an overlay district for, for, for something like this, that's by right.
Or allow it in an existing zone that, that you're okay with letting it be in an existing zone, right? I, I, or BBR, and I don't know the answer, or I haven't studied it enough, I knew that there was three or four criterion that you have to. Goalpost you have to hit, that not all of them are zoning, right? Like you have to, there's some vehicle purchasing, there's some energy projects, so on and so forth, that you have to. Sign up for.
Yeah, so that's, it sounds like we're going to have to adjust, or potentially adjust. Whether it's this bylaw or another bylaw in some way down the line anyways, so we might as well just do this and cross that bridge when we come to it.
Correct.
Okay. Alright.
Oh, that's the lead in, the only other thing, I did look at five other communities as far as their solar bylaws. And it looks like twenty acres or more requires a special permit. So that's a number to think about. Whether that would fit in the R forty zone, I don't know, and the other thing is, there's quite a range of setbacks. The bylaw in other communities. Says front, rear and side yard setbacks shall be a minimum of. Some have fifty feet, some have seventy-five feet and some have a hundred feet. So that's a setback of the array from the front, rear and side yard. And. You know, those are a couple specifics. And there was, and there was another one that said no more than fifty percent of the land parcel. Could be cleared. So that's something else to consider, how much tree removal we, you know, would want to allow, that's been a problem in some communities, but it may not be in our town, so.
Bailey.
Anything else? Marcus?
No.
And I assume when you said twenty acres required a special permit. You're, you're saying that's the minimum amount that you have to have to be able to get a special permit, you can't get one below that.
Uh, no, it's twenty acres or more requires a special permit.
So you don't, you can just put it up in something that's less than twenty acres?
Well, no, they have other guidelines for less than that. But I guess you would say the minimum, if you wrote it in a statement in the bylaw, you would say the minimum. Acreage required is twenty acres.
In a residential zone.
Right, Mike, what you can do is, I don't know if you have the table number one for the solar energy. It could be a simple matter of, we have R forty, R twenty, R twenty-eight and R twenty, R twenty-B. You could take out, if you just wanted to leave it in an R forty, remove the R forty from that chart. And create a new column with R forty site plan review. And underneath that, you can stipulate the minimum acreages that you wanted.
Which, you know, which are you looking at, Alan, again?
It's a, it's a table number one, it's the beginning of the one eighty-five twenty-three point two.
Yep.
And you can see where the second column where it's got R forty, R twenty.
Yep.
Remove R forty from there. And on the, on the most right side. Create a new R forty and have it labeled site plan review. And then it would be special permit and site plan approval. And in there, what you can do is you could stipulate what is going to be the minimum acreage. You know, I know we had looked, we had looked at. In the R forty over twenty acres, we had looked and are in the R, R forty over forty acres. As, and we looked at different scenarios. in our, in the R, R40 over 40 acres, as, and we looked at different scenarios. And at the time, years ago, it seemed like we were looking at the 40 acre parcel, which, you know, if it's 50% of the land, that's 50% of the lot cannot be, trees removed, that leaves you the 20, 20 acres of usable space for a solar project. Trying to, just, that's just trying to simplify it, just by changing, rather than changing terminology, just a matter of addressing what's under the, what would be the new site plan review could be R40.
Any other criteria other than acreage and setbacks and deforestation?
I guess part of my concern is that a lot of the research that I had done prior when we first started talking about changing the solar bylaw was that there seems to be, I feel in my head, there's a difference between a 1,200 square foot ground mounted panel that services a home or a small farm versus a 10 acre massive array that is going to be connected to three-phase power and exporting it out to an electric company. And we just recently had somebody here, a few meetings ago on North Loomis, I believe it was, looking to expand what he had already had on the ground, and he was like, well, I would do 1,100, but if you're only going to let me do 999, that's what I'll do. But his wasn't, he wasn't doing that because he's looking to export it out, he's looking just to service his own home. So, and I think if we're looking at becoming a green community, that's something to keep in mind.
So to expand the ability to, to, you know, reach that break even point with, with your own home, is that what you're?
Yeah, like, you know, that gentleman seemed to, you know, it would, absolutely, I could add another, even just, let's just say 50 square feet, just to keep it small, to then say, well, then we require a 20 acre parcel because you're in the R40. Like, I think there needs to be like a middle ground between, between somebody saying, oh, well, it has to be this small and service your own home versus we're talking about a giant array that we are, you know, it's only going to be feasible on these giant parcels because in order to make it worth the while in exporting it out, it has to be a certain size. So that's why we're talking about these really large parcels, because we understand that in order to make it worthwhile for an electric company to come in and put these down and work with a private homeowner, that's what we're talking about. But what if we're talking about a gentleman in the R40, like on North Loomis, who just says, hey, I could use another 200 square feet, but you guys won't allow it because it's past that trigger.
So you, I mean, you're, you're thinking of tying the, the, the?
The export of energy?
No, but are you, are you thinking about it tying it to actual home use, you know, as a by right type of thing? I mean, I shouldn't say by right because they still have to come in, but I mean, it up, up to, instead of saying up to 1,000, you get up to the amount that is necessary to, to sort of, you know, net zero your, your, your usage.
I guess, or, you know, I don't know if there's more technical terminology out there that we could use to separate between home usage and a generation, a generating facility, you know?
Yeah, I mean, and I, and I suspect we could find better language, and frankly, I'm not, you know, I'm sure there's some leeway with a net zero, right? I mean, if you wanted to, you know, get a, get a battery and, and store it there for, for other use, or you wanted to do this or that, I mean, I'm sure there's some ways to allow some excess or whatever you want, you know, without it being ridiculous, if you're talking about a small amount, you know, a few hundred feet over 1,000.
Right. You know, we, and we're also, you know, if we're talking about being designated a green community, we're currently designated like a farming by right community, we've talked about solar farming. I would think that we, if we have a farmer who is looking to go green, that we would want to encourage that. We've got also over on North Loomis, like there's a winery, there's a brewery, like they have a good parcel there that they might want to put it down, but it might not be that they're looking to add acres upon acres of solar panels and shoot, offshoot it, but they would also, it would make more sense for them to have it on the ground somewhere behind their barn. You know, I just, I, I'm concerned that if we just are thinking about these giant projects that we're cutting out a whole nother segment of our population that might be interested in this going forward.
Okay. All right, so that's something that, I mean, it, maybe you have some sort of sliding scale of, and tie it a little bit to property size or, you know, ability to sort of conceal it.
Or even just intent of use too, you know?
Right. Okay.
It goes from being residential to industrial when you take it and are shooting it off and have to connect to three-phase power and put in new lines and et cetera, et cetera.
Right. Okay. All right. Anybody else have any thoughts or criteria to use for, you know, for the, for the residential large arrays?
The only other thing I saw in the Blanford bylaw was kind of a butter outreach. You're required to do some kind of a butter outreach or community outreach activity. Now granted, that probably doesn't fit expedited permitting if we're trying to go for a green community, but especially, I think if you're in a residential area, it's important to get the input of the butters.
Well, you'd have to have that anyway, David, because if you're going to change the bylaw, you have to have a minimum of two, two meetings, and it would have to go to an annual town meeting. And the reason we have our bylaw now is it was revised and it was quite a, quite a lengthy procedure, and a big portion of the people in the R40 zone were opposed to it. So that's, that's why the, the bylaw is the way it is. It wasn't just thrown together, it was a lot, a lot of input put into that.
Right, no, I, I, I'm sure, what I'm more referring to is if someone was to come and say that they want to put up a, a solar facility in a residential area as part of that permitting process, there would be a butter outreach that they'd have to do, not, not, not just specifically for the, the bylaw change, but?
And it, I, I assume you're talking about, you know, more, well, I suppose it depends on, it's, it's, it sounds like it's going to be by special permit, so I assume you're talking about a broader, a broader community or butter outreach than what is required by, you know?
Just a normal process.
You know, yeah, the normal process.
Yeah, yeah.
Or are you, are you not?
Yeah, I think Dave's, Dave's talking about checking with the neighbors to see if they're even.
Well, yeah.
We just had, we just had a big debate over a cell tower with a bunch of residents in a part of town that don't want to see a cell tower.
Right.
People are going to have neighbors who may not want to see 10 acres in their backyard when they look out the window.
Yeah, and I think, you know, certainly there's whatever the, the normal process of informing of butters and all that kind of goodness, but I think especially with, just because of the topography of Southwick, you're going to have situations where somebody might have a, a view of something, they might not necessarily be a butter, but they are, they do have a view of a large property on the side of a hill or whatever, and?
Right, right.
They have input, which normally wouldn't be covered in our, our current butter notification process.
Yep, no, that's fair. And it sounds like Dave Sutton is suggesting that maybe visibility would be a criteria that you may want to think about?
Yeah.
As well, okay. All right. Marcus, what, what bylaws did you look at, or towns?
Blanford, Williamsburg, Munson, Palmer, I think that was it.
I also, I also looked at 11 of them, Williamsburg, Cary, West Springfield, Holyoke, Westbrookfield, Southampton, Belchertown, Palmer, Hadley, and Agawam. And they, some of them would go down, went down as far as a minimum of five acres. And for example, Blanford, I think was 12 acres for what's called a large, a large facility. So it was really all over this whole spectrum, of course. You know, there are other towns that are limited because of topography and/or in residential zones. A lot, a lot of them were in industrial zones, agricultural zones. So there was a really big gamut, and I know Blanford is quite challenged topography, and so I think that's why they went down to a minimum for a large format of 12 acres. But that one gentleman on North Loomis that was talking about, the, the big question was that he was, he was abutting his neighbor quite closely on the south side, and what we did is we limited his, his visibility. I think Dave, Dave Sutton brought up that point, that trees should be left in place so his next door neighbor does not even see his 1,000 square feet. So that, there's a lot of perimeters that you'd have to look at, and I don't think you really want to look at every single one by itself, that's why it's, we have them grouped into different zones.
Okay. And I may look, you know, before the next meeting, I may try to look at stuff outside of Boston and just see how they're dealing with it out there in similar communities, probably, you know, more along the else, outside of 495 or, or, you know, those communities that are going to be a little bit similar to, to Southwick in, in size and population and in, in potentially farming communities. I won't go up to Lemonster because, you know, those people are, as Dave Sutton knows. No, but I, I will, I, I'll look at some of those, any difference, and then, you know, we can talk, I'll try to get some, some, whether it is just a proposal or whether it is, you know, bits and pieces of other bylaws, and we can just kind of throw it out there for the next meeting and, you know, talk about, talk about, you know, I just think it's, it's, it's at least easier for me to look at something concrete and say yes or no, or move this or don't do this, and look at it collectively when it's all in one to see whether it, you know, it, it seems to fit, rather than sort of talk about it hypothetically. So I do want to get something on paper and, and have something to look at. So I'll use that criteria that we just talked about and kind of get something in writing for next meeting. All right, anybody have anything else on the solar bylaw? And I, and I will address what Jessica said too, to see if there's, you know, sort of use-based or anything like that that we can kind of play around with. Anything else that anybody wants to address on solar? No? Okay. All right, so why don't we continue that out to next? What do we have next meeting? Either Megan or Alan, do we?
We don't have, we don't have anything on our agenda yet.
Okay.
There's some potential ones that may come up, one of them being that gentleman for the Palmer's land on College Highway who wants to put in a self-storage units.
Yeah.
He, he was hoping that he'd have information for that, and he just, but he wanted to come in informally first of all, to make sure what he's doing is correct.
All right, so why don't we put this on at 7:15? That way there's no gap, and if we need to, we can try to throw him in under public comments if he wants to get on earlier. Because I suspect that'll be a quick discussion. Okay. All right. Just as, while you have that out, just as we're discussing it, did we talk, I can't remember if we, did we talk about putting, getting on one of the meetings that amendment to the bylaws to allow for consultant hiring? Do we put that on something or no?
There was, it was talked about in, in Blanford's, I guess they, they made it as part of their application, but for any large solar farm, it's going to have to be engineered anyway because they're going to have to get necessary building department surveys.
I'm not just talking about solar, I'm talking about broader, broader ability to hire consultants. Can you just, we can talk, you can talk to me about, about, about the language to use in the ad, but can you just sort of pencil that in and start the process for getting that on for hearing? The meeting, it's got to be the meeting after next, right? We're not going to have time before the next one.
Right.
So just put that on your list of things that we can, and I, you know, like I said, I can work with you on the language for the ads, but let's get that on for the following meeting.
We need to say that that's a, an amendment to Chapter 185-9, special permits, I believe we talked about putting it under there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think that's right. I do want to just make sure there's nothing out that every single thing that we have to grant under there that would require a consultant has to flow through 9, which I think is right.
And I had sent, I think you and Alan, a four paragraph text for that bylaw.
Yep.
Based on a couple towns that I had looked at there. Well, I took some of that out of our Chapter 315, which is a subdivision where we can require consultants to be hired. And I took that plus some other community had a pretty decent text on it.
Okay.
So you should have that, Alan, I believe.
Yes, no, I, that's, I made reference to that before.
All right, let's.
But if that's your, Michael, you're looking for something broader than just solar than you're looking for, for every application?
It would allow on any sort of application where you needed technical assistance to go and use a consultant at the cost of the applicant. You know, generally, we can obviously tweak it and, and put in limitations or whatever we won't need to do, but I mean, as a general matter, giving us the ability to go and retain consultants, and for large projects, obviously, you know, we can put that on as part of the applicant's cost, you know, to get, to allow for a neutral third party to, to look at it. But again, I just keep that, you know, just start the process and getting things together, and we can work on the language to put in the ad. But I just wanted you to get that moving. And then, um, we also have to do that, we have to adjust, shoot, I'll send it to you, there's another bylaw we have to adjust that we'll put on for that meeting, it'll be quick. All right, so let's go back. Let's go back to the decision. So I'll turn it, let me just see if I can pull stuff up that I need to pull up. All right, let me share my screen and then I'll turn it back over to Marcus here. Okay. All right.
So we were, are we going back to item eight? There, Jessica wanted to think more about that, I think it's under findings, was it?
Page three, item eight.
So gentlemen, before we go on?
So gentlemen, before we go on, I, I've sent an email to Michael so that he could properly share on his screen. Um, I did not apparently send my correct version over this afternoon. My apologies to you all. Um, the substance of the changes are purely mostly grammatical and just, uh, formatting. It's mostly the same language, just tightened up a bit and put in a better format. So, um, a lot of my questions that I had, I, I'd already kind of answered for myself.
Um, all right.
So what are, what are we saying? We have a third document then?
Let me do this. Okay. Let me, um, let me. Um.
Well, has anything all the way up to page number seven? Has that been to your satisfaction, Jenna, Jess?
Well, let me, let me just go, let me just try to pull them both up here and, uh, if you guys don't mind me just coordinating, um, I can kind of highlight things and, um, and then you guys can discuss them if that's okay with you.
So this is the third, a third document?
Yeah, with additional changes. It look, yeah, it looks like, and they're all, they're all identified.
So we should go back to the start then of whatever document we're going to work with.
Yep. And that's fine. Um, so let me just pull, let me just do that. I think I can make this run reasonably smoothly, I hope, if it's not just speak up, but, um, I did also just have a question because I don't know if this was my error last time or if I erase something accidentally or it just wasn't there, but is this, um, where I have it highlighted right here? Where I put in the December 29th date, was it, it says last revised prior to submission on February 27th? And then last revise, should that say, uh, during the hearing or, or prior to close of the hearing or something like that?
Oh, that's the date on the, uh, the plan drawings.
No, it just, but it just, it just says last revised twice. So I just wanted to make sure I didn't.
Oh, okay.
I didn't erase something or I did something wrong because I just.
I don't think you'd erased anything wrong. That's just a, let me look at the original then.
I mean, the first one talks about revision prior to submission. I assume the second one is revision prior to close of the hearing, right?
Let's see.
Yeah, one, ones, ones pertains to the plan, the December 29th. And the other one is the actual final meeting that we had, which we had quite a few of them.
So do we want to say drawing for that one? The last revised drawing?
Correct. This is referring to the plans, right?
Right. I don't know what last revised prior to submission. Uh, set of plans prepared, last revised prior to submission on February 27th, 2020 and later revised, I guess. The last revision was done December 29th, 2020.
Should I just erase this first part then, or what am I doing here?
Is Jessica there?
I'm here. I, this is part of the language that was already existing. Um, I think it's just to identify the date of the plan that it was given on initial submission. But then the plans, the final revision was the December 29th, 2020. So if we don't need the initial date of the application document, then we don't need it, right?
So just revised, last revised on December 29th, 2020?
Right, because, because we received, we received small eight and a half by elevens, some documentation that's not reflected on the large set of plans.
That's, that's funny, you know, and I, I, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't my error. Oh, and I, you know, I'm taking my job as a scribe very seriously. I, so, um, uh, I didn't know if it was my error or not. It's certainly not the most important part of the decision. It kind of is what it is.
So we're starting over then? What is this document we're looking at now? This is?
No, give me one second.
You want to know what I had originally written?
Oh, yeah. Megan.
Changed it. It wasn't me, but we just, I just had in here, this was number four, right? You can go back up.
Uh, hold on one second.
Worth a paragraph?
Under procedural?
Yeah.
The planning board reviewed the application, the plans and all of the material submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. The board received and gave due consideration to the testimony get, testimony given at the public hearing. That was what was originally on there as per Alan.
Mm-hmm. You know, I wasn't going to get nitty picky because.
Somebody added dates. I can't.
There were a lot, there were a lot of plans that were submitted, but it was basically on the computer. Um, so I, I was vague about that because I don't want to be held by counsel for on something that maybe might be incorrect. You know, how those attorneys are.
Which I think is kind of why I had left it, the date blank because like you said, we've had the, you know, the second supplemental, third supplemental and it's every frame of the plan included in every single supplemental. I don't.
But there's a date on each, uh, drawing. And so I, I looked for the last date on the drawing and that was December 29th of 2020. So whenever we get back up to that area, we can decide again, I guess, if we just want to leave it like Alan had it or keep in some specific dates.
I mean, my suggestion would be to keep it consistent with the way from a, from a logistics standpoint as the chair, I'd keep it consistent with the way it's always been done in the past because that's what I've been trying to do. But I, you know, it's not my decision, so I'll leave it to you as to what to do, but that was sort of my, my, my intent as, as I've been chair is to try to have consistency in all the decisions so that there's, you know, there, there's, there's some way we're looking at everything and we're, we're getting the consistent dates and information in that first part that we always need.
So what's the, uh, preference of the four members on this decision? Do you want to remove last revised on December 29th, 2020?
Or leave it all plans and other materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing?
That sounds beautiful.
Good for me.
Removing it? Is that what we're?
Yeah, but we're adding some language that Alan just said.
Well, that, that was, that was one that exist, pre-existed already. But it was, it was, it was revised.
Well, you want to put it back in?
No, that, you guys are doing the, that's just a recommendation. That's a simple recommendation rather than us getting tied up on a particular date by, um.
Let's not trip over our worry here. Yes. What Alan just suggested, it sounds good to me.
So remove what is highlighted in blue. And one, put in what Alan, what are you saying, Alan? Space?
I had on my original, I have my first attempt, I'd had the planning board review the application, the plans and all other materials submitted prior to the close of the public hearing. The board received and gave due consideration to the testimony given at the public hearing. And I had that down under procedural history on my number four, which it's changed, you know, the formats changed.
Yeah.
With, uh, other revisions, but I was trying.
I'm just trying to come up with a short statement to add to this. That'll, that'll cover it.
Isn't that this statement right here? Or am I missing what Alan's saying?
Yeah.
That's fine.
So go back up to that other paragraph. So we'll just leave it as it is right there.
Okay.
What's in blue? Okay.
No. The application accompanied and augmented by a number of additional documents, including a set of plans prepared by Hudson Design Group LLC, blah, blah, blah. Uh, we better say the application was accompanied. Oh, no, and accompanied, accompanied and was augmented.
No, you're right. You're right, Marcus. I put it in the wrong spot. Was.
Was accompanied and augmented. Right. Okay. So that should, uh, take care of that. Very good.
Okay. So.
Now we have other text changes.
Yep. Just give me a minute and I'll.
Okay.
Um. Okay. That's number four.
So the yellow is, is what Jessica, what you're talking about?
Yes, the, the last minute tightenings and pulling it all together. Uh, but this was the, the area that we had spoke about before.
And this is, yeah, it looks like, I'm just looking through what Jessica sent me. This is what she was talking about with eight and um, there's a new one on the next page. What page is that for as well? It's basically the same language. Looks like.
So this is, yeah, the, what's in yellow is additional language.
Yes.
Okay. So the other members of the planning board, are you comfortable with this text that's in yellow being added to item four?
I am. Yeah, that's good.
Fine with me.
All right. Sounds like it's acceptable.
All right. So let me grab eight, which is as I'm looking at it quickly, it seems like it's the same thing.
The repetition kind of.
Ah, shiitake mushroom.
Uh-huh.
So if it's in, if it's in the text above, we could take out eight.
Again, I'd only tell you as the chair and, and the, in the sort of template with these, as Alan knows, I've been trying to put in the one through 17 and all of my things. I assume that's what is being done here, but.
Talking about pedestrian circulation. Is there actually pedestrian circulation?
You consider the trails.
So we'll repeat that. You would like that repeated again, uh? Any other members? Say yea or nay?
Yay.
Okay. We'll keep it in. Thank you.
Be redundant sometimes.
Thank you.
All right. Where is, oh, one is. All right, 15. Actually, I think it's basically what Dave Spina said. But I could be wrong. Maybe he was talking about a different one. I don't know.
Yeah, Dave, Dave Spina was talking about when it came to the adjustment of, of the tower and if they were allowed to go up higher, it wouldn't meet our bylaws. It's, which I think it's coming up. Yeah.
All right. Board members out there, are you okay with adding the text in yellow?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Add that in. Thank you.
Megan, are you going to be able to address all these things the way it's going?
I'm doing it. So I'm, I'm just, I'm just. Megan.
Michael is grabbing.
Send it to me. That'll be fine.
Well, I think, see, I think he's editing it as we go. Yeah.
Okay, this is site plan standards under two. So that's a, a restatement. I guess we've seen that text.
Yep. That's the same, I think. At least that's what I was referring to.
Are you okay having that in there, board members?
Okay, I, okay.
Um.
Okay.
David, you need more time.
Yeah, the, I think with the cut and paste, it says, you know, further these existing walking biking trails. It, it implies that it refers to that. Well, okay, no, it's in there. Is it? I just might get sure that mentioned the walking trails. I had that.
In the Senate, in the Senate's prior.
Same paragraph there. Yeah, it's there. Okay.
Is it all set?
Yep.
I'm good.
Sorry for the redundancy, guys. Just trying to make sure it's on the right spots.
Are the wireless communications district? Is there anything new there, scribe?
Yeah, there's a bunch of stuff. I'm just trying to figure out how to. It's not a, it's, it's, it's more.
The numerating.
Numerating the, yeah, that's a good word.
Requirements.
Under D?
No, here, I'm just going to, um, pop this in there and hold on one second. Just give me one minute. It's more just cut and paste from the bylaws, right? Um.
Yes. Kind of tightening up of the format that my findings were listed, so I do just to copy and paste over.
Yo, okay.
What do we lose, Dave Sutton? Dave Sutton, you there?
Yeah, was it something I said? You threw me out.
Oh.
All right. What is your last here?
Wow, you got, yeah, back up there. We were talking about the trails.
Yeah. Number two, we added, uh, the last couple of sentences after that gap further.
All right. And you okayed it? It looks good?
Yeah.
That was, that was it. That's where I, that's where I got kicked out.
Okay. All right.
Now we have a ton of yellow text items. Is there any statement? Are these are just copied?
I just broke it up because this is just, it looks like it's as Jess, Jess said, just enumerating what was in the bylaw, right?
Yes.
They're all closed. I think.
I'm working off of six different versions, so please read it and make sure I didn't say anything silly.
For the 150 foot, correct?
Planning board can allow up to 150 feet.
Now, this is just general.
This is the bylaw. Do, you, you want the bylaw stated in here?
Alan, you're on mute. Alan. You're on mute, Alan. Hey, thank you. No wonder no one's paying attention to me.
You had something important to say, Alan, I'm sure.
No, no, I'm. That, that, that's just what is in the, the bylaw itself. You know, like Michael was saying before, we tried to do the seventeen in a row and then trying to be rhythmic and maybe just changing a couple of words one way or the other.
Uh, is everybody okay with it? Or do we change anything? What's going on?
Scroll down. What does eight, with just eight is just.
I gotta put stuff. I just, that was my own, just to move on to the next part. I, I'm trying to group it so that. So that you guys can look at it in a group. So this was the group stuff that looks like just quotes to me.
So board members, okay?
I'm good.
Okay, add it in.
Okay.
Okay, Spina, you're on mute.
I am. Protect you guys from the background noise here.
He had to sneeze.
And then the next, hold on, did I copy them? Isn't the next three all begin the same, so I assume that they're. I assume that they are the, they belong together.
Yes, yes, they do, they do.
And, uh, yeah. Which I thought. I think they're just this part. But. Put into this, but take a look at it and tell me. And I can let Jessica, I'm trying to. Look at this quickly so I can. Help you guys look at this in an organized manner.
So these are the true reason, these, these are the, the true findings. Uh, or additional findings under. The wireless. Communication district. These are not from the. The bylaw text.
Right.
Okay.
I'm okay with them.
Any objections?
I'm good.
Put them in.
All right.
So is this, are we, oh, we're still going on additional here text?
Yep, hold on, I'm just, again, I'm just trying to.
These are facts. These aren't part of the bylaw, Marcus, if that was what you're asking.
Yeah, the, these are finding.
Part of the bylaw. Those are, these are underneath facts that were found at the meetings. Statements.
Board members that are here working on this, what is your? Reference?
I'm okay with the highlighted text.
Okay, good. Add text. And. Statement thirteen is not highlighted. That was already accepted before.
Yeah, I'm assuming this is, uh, let's see. Yeah, so that gets down to like right here, right?
Right. So A is the right sub?
No, hold on.
Oh, okay.
All right, so I'm just gonna, these are divided into. Points, so I am going to. Do them that way to break it up, I think. It's like this part right here.
That was underneath something before.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Again, it's, it's, it's just facts that came out at the meeting.
Well, the formatting is off with that A and then the I.
No, that's, that's.
Yeah, he's gonna adjust that. He's, he's working off of the colored ones and then. Yeah, formats, it formats in accordance with.
Some of the stuff below that just you might not even see it again.
Yeah, we'll just do that. How about that?
Yeah. Ignore behind the curtain.
Your mother taught you well, Michael.
She was that English teacher who. Uh, checked your bibliography for the sites that you actually did and went back to one and actually made sure they were correct.
Oh. That wouldn't have been, engineers are noted for not. Having good grammar. Right, David Spina?
Absolutely true. I are an engineer.
I write very small, so you can't read what I write down.
Yeah.
Mr. Sutton.
He left again? Okay, no, he's all right.
No, I just let him back in.
Oh.
Why you keep throwing me out? I didn't say nothing.
He's interrupting your pancakes.
Were you on this when you got kicked out?
Yeah, you were rewriting something and then the screen froze and then you guys all went bye bye.
Okay.
Okay, somebody say something.
Yeah.
We're here.
I'm here. We're here, David.
All right, I feel better.
Hey, trying to be very still to throw you off.
Not alone.
Yeah, you guys, you guys stop moving and I just don't feel the love anymore.
Something's gonna happen soon, maybe.
You really should have moved that cell tower over by my house.
Oh, there you are.
All six people in the area would use it. You have rode your phones up the area, don't you, Dave?
We have, hey, there's seven people now.
Are they all the same party line?
The neighbor had a baby.
You didn't get my smoke signal earlier?
Nah, nah, over here, put it there. You could name it after Sutton.
We'll start nothing. My wife's listening. So are you still fixing or are we agreeing on this?
I don't know. I'm just waiting for.
You're, you're supposed to be reading it and okaying it, Mr. Sutton.
I, I've read it, so I'm good with it. This is what we're, we're talking about.
Where we accept this.
All good.
You got it. All right.
Thank you.
Looks like we need a space or something there. Higher value real estate comma and. Number fourteen. See. English major, what do you say?
Looks like it doesn't like.
It's happy now. Save it. Don't forget to save.
There might be one up a little higher on that paragraph too. Homeowners or something.
I think it wants a hyphen is what I think.
Yeah.
Or no, it was, it's not, it's not, it's not.
Yeah, it doesn't recognize plural homeowners.
It doesn't recognize the word value as a.
Right.
Verb, I think.
Okay.
Well.
Scroll on. Is anything else happening?
Hold on.
We're on old page six. New page six, whoa. Sixteens.
Rather than incomparables, should it be just first applied? See how it's underlined?
Should it be what?
As a comparable?
It doesn't like plural, that's all.
How about as comparable sales?
Likes that better.
And then the next one down.
Yeah, got it.
Rocking it, Mike.
So we're on seventeen. Read the yellow text under seventeen.
Very last sentence, I think force should be forth.
Back and forth.
Yep.
Thank you, David. Richard likes it. Everybody, okay?
Good.
Accept.
Yeah.
All right, so this is, this is not, nothing.
Thank, just, can you just?
Have an objection to the word further, I will.
If you just take the word further out and goes Horizon's application shows.
Yeah.
So that's the, uh, yeah. The old page seven.
All right, here, I'll just throw the rest. There's only a couple.
The info's just kind of tightened in. Taken out of that outline format.
Let me just make sure I copied that right. Nineteen twenty. Paragraph.
Isn't, yeah, wasn't nineteen addressed early, earlier in the. The pages, earlier pages? Or did you just want to leave it in there to go with the flow?
That talks about the forest area, not so much trails. Which is different, I guess.
Okay.
Uh. All right, twenty, look at, read twenty there, you four folks. Okay with that, uh, then the, the last statement here, wait, the planning board has thus proposal according with the Alquapool criteria. That doesn't sound right.
I know, thus proposed.
Thus reject?
Yes, rejected. Or denied.
Planning board has thus.
Point nine. Has rejected the proposal.
Wasn't there text like that before?
Uh, you know what? I think the word. Right, is that? I'm looking back.
Yeah, that's new text.
Is that supposed to be the same thing?
Yeah, I think that's.
Yes.
Is it just the cut and paste? Just consider, I guess, that, right?
If we just make sure that it has this considered the proposal. Maybe like highlight that may not be granted. Or are we bolding not?
I think you bolded not in, in other areas. Yeah, see, it should not be, so I would, yeah.
Format consistency.
Everybody okay with the, that text now?
Yep.
For me.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got a majority there. What is next?
Hold on, I just gotta get back to where I was.
Okay.
Telecommunications act, that is the next.
Yeah. Well, there, did we have all that information about the balloon? Flow, is that in there? Balloon, Horizons? Did, was that included above? Okay, yeah, got it. I see it.
Is it in there?
Uh. I guess it's in there.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
I word balloon, but I can't, uh.
There, there was a section where you referenced some photo, photo numbers. Is that still in there? I'm, I'm looking at the stuff before the telecommunications act.
Um, I wasn't certain if we wanted to have that in there or not.
Okay, so that's, that was removed then. Okay. Yeah, all right, I see. Now we're under telecommunications act. And this has all been. Added.
It's kind of like Dave's information and split up as well. As well as the explanation of what it is.
So this, this is a restatement of David Spina's. Material.
Parts of it. Yeah.
So watch and make sure everything is there that you would. Expect.
Yeah, what I don't see here that's potentially just further down is the stuff about the ability to add to the height.
Yeah, um, there's more to it, Dave. I just, I was trying to break it up like I did before, just to give you guys. Sort of piecemeal, but, um. Let me just, hold on. Let me see if I can grab stuff and then. Let me see if I can grab stuff and then. Did you have? Did you submit something, Dave?
I did, and it got in the original version that Megan sent around.
Alright, let me just see. Did I? I assume it came.
I mean, when I was editing this afternoon, it's possible I screwed up and. Copy over something else. Let me go back, Dave, and.
Let me just. I can pull up, um. Sorry, I assume I was on the email, but I could be wrong. I just don't remember anything from speaking. Let me just see. Yep, January. Yeah, okay. Drafters. Alright, let me pull it up here and then, um. Uh, at least I have it right there when you're talking, so I can, um, take your language and pop it in and make if that's what you want. So that you don't have to recreate the wheel. Um. Alright, but let me just. Well, is am I good with this or do you want me to leave this yellow?
That's okay as far as I'm concerned.
If David is okay with it, then it should be acceptable.
Okay, um. Let me just see how this. That's probably one section here. Alright. I can keep scrolling. Just let me know. I'm also trying to only cut and paste stuff in that will actually fit on the screen, but. This one went a little bigger.
Well, I think David was looking for the power height, uh, potential expansion. Is that?
Right, that was my.
Yeah, hold on. Actually, you know what? Try to, um.
I think what happened is we initially had it up at the very beginning and I I think I tried to move it down here and it got lost.
Let me just hold on. Let me. I I'm using too many devices.
Mail it over.
No, I have it. I just have it up open on my iPad. Let me just open it on. My computer. And then I can cut and paste.
Excuse me for a moment. I have to do bedtime stuff. I'll be right back.
Okay. So this is the discussion of the service. Yeah.
Yeah. Which looks good to me.
Okay. Alright, sorry, um.
So this is all under the Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six.
Is everybody okay with four through seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
And alright, and we already did one through three. Okay, so here's what I. I just gotta run and grab my cord so that my computer doesn't die. Um, but while I am.
Well, that's a good point.
Doing that. And Jessica is putting children to bed. Uh, here's Dave's Spina's. At least that I took from an email. Just if you have thoughts or changes, just hold them for one minute while I do this.
Getting more power.
Excellent.
Everybody's powering up.
Batteries ran out around the same time.
Okay. No, did I? Did I not? Did you guys look at eight or was that what was off the page? Maybe that was off the page. Dave, that's what that's what you had sent? That's all said?
It is. Yes, it is. Yeah, that's that's language. I'm not saying it's perfect, but it's, yeah, that's 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 the stuff I had to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I got the right thing that you. That's the only thing I could find in my.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Scribe, Michael, the, uh, under eight there, there's a red. There's an I in there and should be taken out. You're on it.
Is the I or the O coming out? Because they're both words.
I think it's supposed to be in.
Yeah. Very good.
Reinforced and, yeah, yeah.
So this other stuff down below now that, uh, Mr. Spina. It's associated with. It's like it's got a different font.
Are we? Are we all set with this? This right here? Just so I can. Yeah.
That was in the original, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, all I think of was highlighted was that first part. I don't know what was. I don't know. I'd have to.
It was in the origin.
Tower was one hundred and twenty feet. We hit one thirty-six, Dave. What do you come up with that?
Yeah, so probably a little bit of explanations required for this whole, my rationale.
You're a draft.
Yeah, so first the hundred and twenty-four feet, that is. The maximum height of the antennas on the tower as proposed. On the application. And if you look at that, you know, the the law that's there, it says that. As long they can come back and file a, uh, a request to increase the height of the tower. And as long as it doesn't substantially increase the height of the tower. Where we don't have the opportunity to disapprove it. We have. We have to approve it. That substantial threshold is ten percent. So basically, if they come back with something, it's an increase of ten percent or less. We don't have the. You don't have the ability to say no. So what I'm saying is, based on that. Effectively, at this time, this is our one and only time to be able to say yes or no to one hundred and thirty-six foot tower. And if you say, if you basically, if what we're saying is by approving this right now, we'd be approving up to one hundred and thirty-six feet. If you then do all this, all the setbacks and everything, do the math. That doesn't meet our, uh, required, what are three and a half times to residential property line.
Right. Okay, thank you.
How are you formatting it in that into it? Is that a standalone item?
I'm not doing anything, but if you tell me where to put it, I'm happy to put it there.
Where, David, where is it gonna fit?
I'm not so sure exactly where, yeah, where the.
Scroll up. Let's see what's up above it. What's up above it?
Do you want me to, before I do that, do you want me to put what else is in this section?
There's more in this section.
Yeah, there's, um, a handful more paragraphs. Uh, only probably two of them, maybe three really are. Uh, highlighted. And then it gets to the decision. You want me to just put the rest of it and then you guys can figure out where to. Because then you can look at it while Jessica's away and, um. That might expedite things a little bit.
Basically, what you can do is you make that number nine.
So hold on a second. Let me go back up to where. Alright, so that's the rest of. Jessica's. If you want to go through nine and ten and then I can go down to the others. Can you guys see nine and ten?
Yes, we can see nine and ten. So this talks about alternative sites. Alternative sites. Was that in the orig- the one that was sent out earlier, I guess, probably somewhere?
What's in yellow right now?
Yeah.
Wasn't part of the original one.
Okay.
That's new.
Well, this was a part of it that it's there. It says, while not in the twenty-year-old wireless overlay district, LaCory Castle is adjacent to the district properties as an owner willing to locate a tower on this size. And there's a whole section. I under A. Number one under A?
Yep.
So it's just moved around.
What the yellow means, I just know that it it it's in what she said, so. Maybe it doesn't mean new. Maybe it just means moved around.
I jump in to answer, yes, it's all pretty much the same information from the three o'clock email, just. Kind of. To read a bit more proper.
So ten and then going on down farther.
You guys want to agree on nine and ten or do you want me to just keep going and then do the whole thing?
I go nine and ten.
Fine.
Yes, on nine and ten. Is that what I'm hearing?
Hmm.
Yeah, good.
Let me do those and then. Well, I'm stood this way so I can. Well, actually, is there anything? Yeah, there's nothing in fourteen, so, uh, it's just eleven and thirteen, eleven, twelve and thirteen.
Someone make a recommendation after you finish reading.
Outside of the wireless communication area, are we spot zoning?
They're gonna get that.
Well, it's not a zone. It's a it's a, um. District, but I think they addressed the Shebelly property and the Shebelly property. We could not meet the, um. The minimum setbacks that we needed. Because we brought that was brought up like at the. In one of the last meetings we had. And I did address the Shebelly property. Well, if you take any property outside of the wireless zone, would that be? Considered spot zoning? Like the LaCory property? No.
It's an overlay zone. It's an overlay district. It's an overlay district, so you could have it here and there. I don't think.
Which we do. We do have. Our wireless is in multiple zones, but it doesn't really pertain to the zone. It pertains to the area that's available. Okay with this.
One okay.
Dick, just to give you a, you know, reference point, we did it with, um. We did do a zone change. If my memory serves me, for Dr. Walt's place, right? And. I I thought we did and we did it because because it made it made sense to sort of, you know, extend it on. Even though we were doing one property, it kind of made sense, um, to to do that.
And it was contiguous.
Got one okay. I need, uh, two more probably.
I'm okay.
Already. David Spina's okay. David Sutton's okay. Accept it, please.
Okay, so.
Is this going to continue on then as a number? Are numbered items under? Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six? Is that what you're referencing, uh, David Spina?
Mike, Michael, can you can you scroll down a little bit more to see what follows after this?
There's nothing. And I just haven't erased it, but, um. This that's I took everything from the new version, so this is all just, um. I just thought it was easier to cut and paste from that new thing, so we're.
Everything down to the decision. Okay, so you can delete that.
Though actually, the decision might, hold on.
What?
Well, here. I'm gonna cut and paste it so that I'm not. I don't want there to be any. Question.
What? What are you cutting and pasting here now?
I'm just putting the exact same thing.
Okay.
That was the thing that's on Jessica's new one. I put in this new one. Or this this old one.
But we're looking at.
Here, watch this.
What's above?
That's the old.
Yeah.
That's the new.
Right.
And the only reason I did it, I'm not sure the decision's any different, but, um. What jumped to me is that it had you voting, um, to deny it, so.
Yeah, we gotta talk about the votes because that's not correct, but let's finish up above.
Okay. So.
Right there.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know that necessarily is part of the. Or or, you know, specifically pertains to the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six. Just because I don't know if necessarily those. Those US codes are are part of it or not, but.
So do we make it a separate section?
It could be a separate section. It could be.
Reference.
I mean, you could make it just, you know, I mean, we could change the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety-six to just. I don't know, relevant.
Reference material?
Uh, I don't know if I call it reference material.
Well, you're talking about telecommunications.
Talking about, yeah, I mean.
Considerations or something.
Considerations within the construct of federal telecommunications law. I don't know.
What it's worth, that's it's the Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act of two thousand and twelve.
Oh, thank you.
There you go. Fantastic.
I'm gonna change big bucks.
Yeah.
You're the man, Mike.
Yep.
Should put it in, make it a separate.
Make a separate section with that. That's fine.
Section with that title and, uh, put it under there.
Call it good.
So it'll be F.
F, F one and, yep.
Yep. Yep.
Alright, I don't, you tell me if that's if that's done in an appropriate manner, I was just trying to follow the same idea.
Looks good to me.
It has all your information in it, doesn't it, Dave?
Yeah, no, that's, yep, that's good.
Alright, everybody good with that?
Yep, I was losing my power, I had to get a cord.
I don't hear any objections. So the decision is the next to last item. And there's some text in there that doesn't quite read right.
What is wrong?
Well, that's different, wait a minute, that's different than the document I saw before. Um, let's see.
Yeah, this is, this is from the 3 o'clock one, Marcus.
Okay, maybe it's different then.
Because technically you voted to against denial, you didn't necessarily vote to grant, you just voted against denial.
That's correct, and this vote is, yeah, the, we only had one vote, the minutes only show one vote. So uh the original text or the text that I had suggested uh so following members of the planning board voted on January to deny the requested special permit and site plan approval. Should have been one vote.
Marcus, can I offer a suggestion as what I've done in the past?
Sure.
Which is this. Right, you leave it blank.
What?
You leave it blank. Your name is, your your line is blank, the rest have signed it because they're voting to deny. Does that make sense?
Uh yeah, I guess, let me see.
Sure, just listen, I'll do it whatever, however you want, but we've done that in the in the past in other decisions.
So a motion, this is the minutes, a motion was made by Mr. Utzinger and seconded by Mrs. Thornton to deny the special permit and site plan approval for the wireless communications facility at 13 Liberty Lane. Uh, yeah, that would probably be okay then. Uh what is acting chair? My title, I would just say Vice Chair.
Michael down below, you have to.
You're welcome to, you know, be acting chair anytime you like, I'm I'm not.
No, that's okay.
Sorry, I was climbing chair.
Now, you gotta put in above there, back up to the, back up, up.
Yeah, hold on, sorry, I just wanted to do that while I was thinking about it.
Oh. It was one vote. The requested special permit and site plan approval, it was one vote.
Uh, true. I get what you're saying, I think, right, is this what you mean?
Yeah. And yeah. Okay, and then this other part can be removed there. Uh the date, this date February 8, 2021. Should that not be 8 January, or what does that date mean?
Oh, February 9th, let's start with that.
Or the 9th, right?
So we're saying okay. So we want that date to be February 9th. Yeah.
Correct.
Then there's a filing and a certification, that's, that's, that reads good.
Yeah, that's home, that's home, Michelle's.
Yeah.
Do you need that?
What?
Do you actually need the filing and certification for a denial?
You need to file, we have to file it. We took out.
And then there is, there is the appeal period.
Yeah.
Uh, but there was a, isn't there three things here? Hold on.
There's usually the applicant usually uh
Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Signs the acceptance, but that doesn't apply in the denial.
Okay, alright, perfect, that's.
Because, because, okay. The one thing it's missing is acknowledgement by applicant. There's nothing for them to acknowledge because it was denied.
Okay.
So typically, there is three at the bottom at the end, but you know, they, the applicant has nothing to sign.
Yeah, no, it's, it just popped in my head, there's usually three and that's what sort of caused me to pause.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, so we are at 12-page document.
Correct.
And it's been reviewed. What is the next item is for a motion to approve the decision.
Make motion to approve the decision of the planning board to deny Horizon's request for a cell tower.
Second it.
Motion made by Richard Utzinger and seconded by David Sutton. Roll call vote. Marcus Phelps, no.
Richard Utzinger, yes.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
Okay, on that vote, the decision is approved. Uh, the next item is signatures. The way this is shown here, uh, is that electronic, we're gonna do an electronic signature?
Let's bring it to Florida, you're gonna have to.
Uh, oh, well, we overnight, you get overnight mail, don't you, Richard?
Yeah, you're gonna spend the money.
We've just done them all, we've just done them all electronically, I think you have the.
Should, should Megan add in the language to the end of it, of in lieu of signature, I don't.
Yeah, that's same thing from the minutes, right, is that um.
Not certain what that language is, Meg.
Yep, I can do that.
So I need a motion to allow the decision to be signed electronically.
Motion to sign electronically.
Seconded.
Motion made by Richard Utzinger, seconded by David Sutton to sign the decision electronically. Uh, I'm not gonna sign it, so I'll abstain, Marcus Phelps abstaining. Richard?
Richard Utzinger, sign it.
Aye, okay.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor and aye.
Thank you very much. Alright, just two quick items, uh once this is put together here and printed out. It needs to be filed with the town clerk. And then we'll need two letters. One will be going to the applicant with a copy of this decision and uh mentioning their appeal rights under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 17. And I believe Alan, you may want to check on this, but I believe we should send a copy of this decision uh, under a letter to the parties of interest. Which means it would be the butters, the people who have been coming to the media, to the hearings and so forth. So they're aware of the.
Wouldn't they see that online, like they've been looking at all the other things, because it can be costly to send it to 100 people.
Okay, maybe you could check with somebody if that's acceptable to notify the parties of interest.
Marcus, I think we should.
Send it to the law offices of Attorney Campanelli and.
What's that?
We want to send it to the attorney that was representing them, would that handle that?
Hmm. I don't think it would totally handle it because I don't think whatever the butter, however long the butters list was, but we probably should send him a courtesy copy, I guess, too. Maybe CC.
I think we should send a letter to the board selecting, just so they have it, because everyone's, throws under the bus to start with.
I don't know, Alan, who usually gets the decisions, are they circulated at all in in Town Hall?
No, they're not, they go to, they go to Michelle, Michelle Holden. Uh, once the, once the appeal period is up, if it's, if it knows no appeal, then we will get a signed a shield assigned at the bottom certifying that this is correct. And that um the applicant typically, you know, this has been a this one has a lot of more of a butters than than normal, so it would be, it'd be costly to send it out to everybody because a lot of the people that were sent letters aren't really sort of butters, they just lie within the the setback.
Okay.
So I think if we, if we put it on, online.
Yeah, let's, let's put a, put together a letter for me to sign, just a letter to the applicant. And we'll CC uh, the select board and Attorney Campanelli. And then somehow we'll get the word out that it is on uh, on, online.
Right, because this could still be, it's going, well, it's probably going to be appealed, so.
Well, that's, that's another step beyond what we're doing here, right, so I think that wraps it up.
Marcus, can I just offer one thing, um, which I probably should have raised before, though I suppose you could still uh, adjust the written decision, um, there was a comment made in the, in the chat, I just don't know if you have access to that or are looking at it, I didn't look at it before, but um that Amy Stack had just mentioned about about Dave Spina's reference to that Middle Class Tax Act and and whether that should be sort of um, that that it's not a means to deny a permit, so it should be in there, you know, conditionally for, you know, just as a statement rather than as a reason to deny.
Well, it's a finding.
Hmm. Yeah.
It's a finding, it's not a reason to deny. I don't think, but.
I just, that's what her comment is, I didn't know if you wanted to address that um in any way, but I just, I didn't know if you were looking at the chat, so I wanted to make sure.
Okay, I'll defer to the four members who voted to deny. What's your pleasure there?
Mike, repeat that one more time for me.
Um, she had, and and if, is Amy still on there, um she can certainly jump in, but um, it just reads that uh, whether whether that's a reason to deny the permit, and I, I'm assuming versus, you know, just a a concern or something that is not necessarily an independent reason to deny the permit, I but I just want to raise.
Amy Stack.
The board, I think the board has, you know, it's our, it's their prerogative to make a decision, and I don't know how much, I don't think we're taking input at this point, I mean, if you want to bring it up.
I think Dave was trying to hold up a second, Marcus, I think Dave was trying to make a point that if if we allow it, it's gonna violate the setback laws.
Right, I think it is a reason to deny.
Yeah. I agree with David.
Well, I mean, that, that's what David's intent was, and I think it, it reads that way also.
It shows the potential to violate the setback laws.
Correct.
I think if that was the sole piece of information that we had in our findings, that would be a problem. Um, potentially just going based upon the history that we've been told about how these decisions can be overturned, um so I don't I I think it is definitely a finding that we've had, so I, there's enough there that I'm not too concerned about it being included. And, you know, we did just vote on it, so can't really change it.
Michael, did you just see the the chat from Attorney Fenton? He's saying that the board has already been, the board has already voted on this. So it has to be in its place, because I'm pretty sure is Michael still there?
I.
Something just flashed on my screen.
I don't, again, it's not my call, I just wanted to, I don't know if Marcus can see the chat.
Uh, I did, I I brought it up now, and Mr. Fenton has posed the question, is the board accepting public testimony? Applicant was advised that hearing is closed, please advise. So Mr. Fenton's representing the applicant. And our hearing is closed, the decision has been written, and it's been voted on. So I defer to the four members that are here, whether or not you want to reopen the decision and change it.
I'd say no, I think you should just leave it the way it is, no, it's, it's good, it's good that Amy meant, brought that up of what he's basically saying, if, if Amy can talk about it, can he talk about it? And that might be opening another can of worms.
We, I think we're done.
I agree.
Finished, please, uh I will, let's see. Uh
Turn it back over.
We're all set. It is signed electronically as you authorized.
Okay, so let me just um before we go on, uh, if you don't mind, let me just save this. We don't want that issue.
Mike, does Marcus have to do the minutes? From the previous, or is that you?
It gotta go both ways, why, why don't you just let Marcus do it, because I don't really care, frankly.
I prefer to do another item, Michael, before the minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
Press for time, uh, there's an important vote that needs to happen here.
Alright, just give me one second to save this, so that um.
Yep.
Okay, so that is saved, and I'll send that to Megan, um, when I get my first opportunity here. Okay.
Megan, did you have an outstanding minutes that were still due?
Um, I just haven't received a copy of November tenth. They've been voted on, but I can't send them to the town clerk.
You don't have a copy of it?
No.
Uh, then I sent it to you?
No, I've emailed you a few times asking, but.
That's why, I figured I'd be, I'd be the second wife.
Seriously? Uh, all right, it's been a bit, it's been busy, sorry, um, if you don't hear, if you email me and there's just dead silence, text me. That, that's like a twenty-five percent more chance I'll at least respond to that. So, uh, all right, let me, um, when we're done with this, I'll shoot it over to you, I apologize. November, which one do you need?
November tenth.
Okay. Let me, um. I'll send that over as well as that decision. Perfect, okay, sorry about that. Um, and like I said, don't hesitate to bug, you can just bug me if you don't get something, I've. I've had that Hotmail account for twenty-five years, and there's so much crap that goes in there, but it's a good address, so I keep it, um. Um, all right, Marcus, what did you wanna, um?
Yeah, when we visited here today on the phone, there's an opportunity to apply to the. Community Preservation Committee for some Community Preservation Act funds. To, uh, pay for the preparation of a housing plan. And the housing plan can be used as a part of our master plan. So if we're able to move forward, uh, with the master plan, the housing element. Can be completed, uh, using this housing plan. So in order to apply for these funds from the, uh, reserved account. Community Housing Reserved Account, we need a, uh, the planning board to say yes, go ahead with an application. We'll be asking for, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars to do the housing plan. And currently, in the Community Housing Reserve Account, there is five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So, I'd like to move forward with the application. And, uh, the Community Preservation Committee will be meeting, I believe it's February eighteenth. So, this would be a good time to get that in and, uh, see what happens. Mr. Spina is our representative on that committee. Anyway, that would be, uh, what would be needed as far as a motion to, uh, submit an application.
Okay, so, uh, um. I just, I'm trying to grab and pull up what you, I see two things here.
Uh, the narrative would be the best one to show, I think the other one is the Master Plan Briefing Paper.
Yeah, what is that for, what is that?
That's the overall briefing paper, that's to accom, it accompanied our budget request. To the Finance Committee and the Select Board for fifty thousand dollars for a master plan. This other, this money I'm talking about coming from the Community Preservation Act. Is additional funds that would be used specifically to prepare a housing plan. And that's where, uh, I sent you the narrative for that application.
Okay. All right, hold on, sorry.
And it is a legitimate use of, uh, community housing funds. For, uh, them to be used on preparing a housing plan. I've talked to a couple people on that, in that area, Carl Steinhardt asked the question. You know, is this a legitimate use of, uh, funds?
All right, can you, um, see that screen?
Yes.
All right, that's what you wanted me to share, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So the first paragraph alludes to the fact that we're hoping to in, initiate a two-year master planning process. Uh, that would, you know, replace our old plan, and we need twenty-five thousand dollars to. Do a housing plan which will serve as the housing element of this master plan. And then it describes more of what. You know, a housing element is, what it contains, uh, the questions it hopefully answers. And it will help also the Community Preservation Committee, uh, identify opportunities for use of the. That reserve account funds, those zer, reserve account funds.
So Marcus is just looking for. People to stand behind him, so he can go ahead and, from it, send us by February eighteenth.
All right, I'm just trying to go through it, so people can read it, if I go too fast, just yell.
Typically, as part of any master plan, uh, they do talk about housing. Housing for the elderly, low-income housing, they're, they're housing of some, a certain sorts. And where they may be, you know, good, like a place to put down. It kind of follows along also with public transportation.
All right, is everybody, um. Any thoughts on this? Any suggested additions, any suggestion, suggested deletions, anything?
No, it's, go ahead and do this.
Have we gone out at all and gotten estimates, or, like, the twenty-five thousand dollar? Pretty confident that's either, it's the right number, or?
Yeah, I was looking at, uh, a couple. Sites, websites, and, uh, the cost ranges from fifteen to thirty thousand. So, I'm still, I still have a, I have a call in. Uh, to, uh, actually, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, to see if they have a general idea. Of the plan, but I think middle ground for our, you know, the size of our community, I think that's gonna be adequate to do, do the plan.
All right, any other comments? Okay, um. Well, why don't we do a vote? Just so it's on the record, um, and this is going over to, uh, CPC?
Yes.
Um, just this, or I assume we just send it over with a cover letter?
Oh, no, there, there's an application form, uh, there's criteria have to be, you know, checked off, so. I'll continue to work on that, I'll probably bring it over to you to sign. It's, you know, pretty, pretty simple forms, it's not much of a form, the narrative is really what they're gonna look at.
Okay, well, I mean, assuming that's the case, and I, I, I don't have a problem, why don't we vote to, um. To, um. Uh, have you, you know, prepare the, the formal application and, and, and agree that this. Narrative would go along with it. Do I hear a, a motion on that?
So.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica.
Perfect, um, all right, so Marcus can take care of that.
Thank you very much.
Um.
Thanks for working on that, Marcus.
No, you're welcome, we'll, we'll see what happens, at least we'll have a, another piece of the puzzle.
We might get our funds approved if we take a little bit off, yeah, no.
We still need that fifty thousand, or a hundred thousand, actually, uh. I think it's Blandford is doing a master plan for a hundred and two thousand.
Okay, um. So we, Marcus, we talked about the two things you wanted to talk about, right, the, um. That CPC thing and, um. What was the other thing? I don't know. But we, we covered everything that you wanted to talk about, right?
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, the minutes, you wanna just handle the minutes, and then we can kinda?
Okay, uh, these were the minutes for January nineteenth. Wherever my papers are. Yeah, I'll, I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes for January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Richard Utzinger, seconded by David Sutton, to accept the minutes of January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. Roll call vote, Marcus Phelps, aye.
Richard Utzinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Uh, hold on. Jessica Thor, and I.
Thank you very much, Jessica Thordy, back to you.
So I think we're, um, all set, I just wanted to, um. You know, as we're looking ahead here, now that Verizon is done, um, so the next meeting is what, in two weeks? We have the solar, you know, we can spend some time with that solar decision, we may have some little things that pop in. Um, the meeting after that. May very well have solar on it as well, but I'd like to have that, um. Hiring, uh, consultant bylaw on that, um, that would be what, March, um. What's today, the ninth? Um, so like March tenth or something like that, somewhere around there, um.
Oh, you're talking about having a public hearing.
Correct. March ninth, so.
Because, and I don't know what the timeframe is to get, you know, things in line for the town meeting, but. Those timeframes are, you know, way out, I guess.
Yeah, well, I'm gonna give it, you know, best shot we can, and I'll talk to the Select Board to see what they'll, what they, what they need it by, but we'll, we'll give it a shot. Um, so on three nine, we'll do that consultant one, um, there's also, um. Uh, I think I mentioned before, we have to take out the word grandfathering from, or I'd like to, I think, I think it's. The courts are no longer using that term, so, uh, I think we need to remove it from the bylaws, um, it's an easy change. Um, we have one bylaw that uses it, so, um, we'll put that on for three nine. And then, um. The question becomes, do we start to get into, I, I doubt it would. Get before the town meeting, but do we, do we get into? Now, just to escape my mind, what's the other one that we need to?
Short-term rental subcommittee.
Well, we'll deal with that, uh, that's on my list for next.
Joe, Joe Diddy's sign.
Thank you, signs, that, thank you. Um, we will not refer to it as Joe Diddy's sign, right?
Oh, the sign revising the sign by.
Joe is on the meeting, um, uh, so we do have to deal with the, the sign bylaw, I don't know if you guys wanna start that. You know, on the ninth, or, or, or do you wanna just kick that off a little bit?
I don't know, I thought that was pretty easy, we just gotta change the time that, uh. These, uh, signs are allowed to change and, uh. I don't know what else, but maybe something else.
It has to be allowed in his own. He's in a residential zone.
Well, we could allow it for agricultural users.
Right.
Well, that's the idea, is whether.
They, they seem to be able to, you know, have, are we corrected some of that, I think?
The agricultural retail.
Yeah.
Um, you know, is whether they're allowed to have it or not, that's sort of the question, which, you know, I, I, I've never seen a real issue with that, um. Um, but, I, I don't, if you guys wanna try to, you know, put that on for the ninth and, and, and get through that, um. You know, I don't think, I either, I don't think, those are three bylaw changes, but I don't think any of the three are real heavy lifting. You guys good with that?
I'm with me.
All right.
I don't mind staying up till ten o'clock.
That's, well, that's the part of it, is that I'm trying to not have that anymore, uh, give you guys a break here, um. But I don't, like I said, I don't think that that's huge, heavy lifting, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind was.
If Marcus pulls out a pocket watch first off. Anybody else wanna, what time is it in your world, Marcus?
I'm old school, Jessica.
It's almost ten o'clock, I'm a little punchy.
I got this when I graduated from college.
It may watches them.
It's not a sun dial, right?
Eighteen, eighteen sixty-two.
Sorry, Michael, go ahead.
No, that's okay, um, I just wanna, I just wanted to, you know. Um, w- we may very well have coming down the pike. In the next couple months, um, that development over on Depot. Um, you know, potentially the development with Griffin Land that Alan mentioned, um. Uh, I can't, that, there's one on Hillside that may come down the pike, um, you know. Next few months into the summer, so I just wanted to at least, you know, whatever we can get done now. Potentially even get on the town meeting, and then clear up the schedule a little bit, so we can kinda handle those developments as they come in, 'cause I expect. That those will be coming in, you know, March, April, May, so. Um, but if there's other stuff that you guys think of, you know, just let, let me know, we may very well have a little bit of. Um, lower key meetings for a couple of weeks, which is not the worst thing. All right, so why don't, um, Alan and Megan, I, I'll work with you to get the language for the ads, but why don't we try to get all three of those bylaw changes? On for the ninth, we'll advertise them and, and get those out there for the ninth. All right.
Okay.
Mr. Sutton.
Make a motion to close the meeting.
Marcus Phelps, seconds.
I'll do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave Spina, aye.
Jessica Thor, and I.
All right, y'all have a good night.
Do your turn, take care.